This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the February 8th South Whitehall Township Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started, for everyone in the audience and online, the Ridge Farm Phase 1C has been pulled from the agenda. My understanding is they're still working through engineering comments. They've, I believe they've submitted about, resubmitted about two or three times. So they've been diligently working through the engineering reviews, and I believe one of the main items they're working through is the water main to serve the proposed dwellings. But just for anyone that wanted to see that project, it's not on the agenda tonight. With that being said, can everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic, for just being a nation under God, and as well. Mr. Adams, can you do the roll call?
Yes. Trevor Dombach.
Here.
Tim Dugan.
Here.
Todd Farringer.
Here.
Brian Height.
Here.
Diane Kelly.
Here.
Mark Luth.
Here.
David Wilson.
Here.
Seven members present, sufficient for a quorum.
All right. Also, I'd like to make note of township staff and consultants here. Greg Adams, Township Planner. Dave Manhart, Director of Community Development. Jennifer Aldifer, Township Solicitor with Zader Law. Aaron Bet, Township Engineer with Pitcock Company. And we have an alternate solicitor here. I apologize, I forget your name.
Anthony Jovini from Brockland DeVito.
Thank you. All right. And Mr. Adams, can you do the meeting rules?
Yes. For an orderly meeting wherein all attendees may fully be able to participate, we ask that you adhere to the following rules. In order that both in-person and remote attendees may hear all comments and questions, all in-person attendees will be required to use the microphones at all times. We request that remote attendees, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Staff may mute the microphones, remote attendees, if needed. Public questions and comments will be taken at periodic intervals throughout the agenda. We will start with no time limits, but the Planning Commission Chairman may impose a time limitation if there are many questions or if the meeting is running short on time. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and then move to the podium when directed. Turn the podium microphone on and state your name, address, and your comment or question. Please turn the podium microphone off when done. For remote attendees, the chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. When you are recognized and so directed, please unmute your microphone and state your comment or question. Mute your microphone when done. For those who are accessing the meeting by phone only, staff will periodically ask for caller comments and unmute all callers. Callers must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Your cooperation and adherence to these rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you.
All right, we're on Agenda Item Number Three, Review of the January 11, 2024 Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, there are some significant flaws in the way the minutes are written. There are several elements, especially under 4C for the 1429 Eck Road Outdoor Storage, that did not occur during that meeting. So I would like to make a motion to table these minutes so they can be rewritten and confirmed with the video that was taken of that meeting.
Does anyone else have any comments?
I would second that motion so that we can clarify the meeting minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No one's opposed, so moved. All right, we're on Agenda Item Number Four, Subdivision Review. The first project on the agenda is the Aesthetic Surgery Associates Medical Office Building. Request for Preliminary Final Plan Review. Is there anyone in the audience particularly interested in this online or present? One person for the applicant and one in the audience. Okay. All right, Mr. Adams, would you like to do the township staff presentation?
Yes. This is an application to develop the property located at 1619 Hausmann Road. The plan proposes to construct a two-story, 30,033-square-foot medical office building and a 97-space parking lot on the 2.61-acre parcel. The property is to be served by public water and public sewer and is zoned highway commercial HC. 1619 Hausmann Partners LLC is the owner and applicant. And just going straight to the recommendation, the department recommends that the Planning Commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant the time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting the township a waiver from the timeframe in which to act upon the plan. The Planning Commission's soft deadline to act on the plan is March 11, 2024. The Board of Commissioners' deadline to act on the plan is April 10, 2024.
All right, does the, Ms. Bet, would you like to do your engineer review?
Sure. As mentioned in our January 31st memo to the township, a preliminary final review was performed by our office. Some comments to note from our review pertain to the connectivity of the Hausmann Road frontage improvements to the Longs Water Site, which is just south of the property, stormwater management analysis, and general drafting requirements. There were seven waiver requests as listed in our memo, and we note that we have no engineering objection to these waivers. However, we would defer to the Township Lighting and Geotechnical Consultants on two requests. The design engineer has spoken with our office and has acknowledged our comments and is eager to get these items addressed. Therefore, at this time, we do not recommend engineering approval.
All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to do your presentation?
Eric Schock from Fitzpatrick-Lensen-Buba. Thanks for the reminder. With me is Don Peters from Bowler Engineering, who's a civil. And then we also have Dr. Chung, who's a principal and one of the physicians from ASA, in case there's any questions about the actual use itself. As was noted, it's a medical office, and we've gotten the comments. They're probably the large bulk of which our will complies. There are a couple of items that probably need to do a little bit more work on to get those, as your engineer indicated. But my thought was, Mr. Peters can kind of run through the layout so we can see if there's any comments from the Planning Commission on what we're going to show you. We can talk about the waivers and then most likely end up where your engineer suggested, which is, we think we're pretty close, but I think we're okay with revising the plan and hoping to come back next time and get a recommendation, barring anything unforeseen that throws a major wrench into the works. So with that, Don, if you want to walk through what we're proposing, and then we can go to questions and maybe touch on the two areas that the township engineer did in terms of the, that represented probably the bulk of the material comments.
All right, so, yeah, as mentioned, medical office building, approximately 30,000 square feet, two-story. To clarify the parking, the majority of the parking is outdoor exterior parking. There is a small portion of the building where there will be private employee parking spaces. The plan that was submitted shows six. Just so everybody's aware, we're currently working with the architect now just to update that and reduce that to two. The intent is just to have overhead garage doors there that would be utilized on a private basis specifically for the doctors that are there, with the remaining spaces being for the remaining employees and for visitors. So we have a two-way driveway that we aligned with the driveway across the street on Hausmann. The way we're handling stormwater management on this site is by collecting everything, roof, parking lot, into a below-ground basin. And then we're going to, we're going to hold that water to mitigate any type of rate and volume increases and utilize subsurface irrigation beds on the frontage of the property. I know stormwater is a concern in this area, so what we're doing is above the standard requirements, which is typically your two-year storm. We're looking at mitigating all the way up through the largest storm event that you would model, 100-year storm, to include, to make sure that we're not increasing any stormwater in any direction from the site. To touch on one of the comments that Aaron had mentioned, specifically, the one area where we have to step back and take a look at from a stormwater standpoint is along the frontage of the property. So we are, per ordinance, providing the frontage improvements to include widening and sidewalk. In those cases, managing the stormwater on that part of the site is a little bit more tricky than onsite, where we have a little bit more flexibility as to where we can put structures, basins, and that. So the comment really is to make sure that we're not sending any increases in stormwater in the direction of the Longs property and beyond. So we're going to request from the township that we get provided the plans for the Longs approved plans, that way we can make sure we're tying our curb line in properly. My understanding is they're going to be installing those improvements within this next year. So our sidewalk and curb will tie directly into theirs, and we will look at, we'll step back and look at the analysis, working directly with Pitcock to make sure that we're not sending any increases downstream. Beyond that, I feel the comments that are in the letter, we can comply with all of those, and that's our intent. I'd ask, is there any questions or feedback that the Planning Commission has on the plan?
I have one in relation to the ADA parking spaces. They seem kind of far away from, I'm not sure exactly where the entrance, the idea for ADA-compliant spaces is try to make that access as short as possible. So you might want to rethink. I appreciate that you're showing them at least, but try to orient them so it's a little less of a...
So to clarify, the entrance is actually located along the northern, well, planned north portion of the property, right where the pointer is at right now. So there's a sidewalk there that would provide access from those spaces down. We can take a look at maybe shifting two of them, but wanted to try to group those spaces together as a whole.
Okay. I just, from the, from the plans we were provided, I wasn't sure where the, I was assuming that it was where the, it looks like there's a car pull-off area. So, okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. And with regards to the parking underneath the second floor, will that require any type of fire protection for those vehicles being in there?
Yeah, so the, that's being worked out currently with the architect. They're going to make sure that this building is designed code-compliant. So the fire rating, there will be a fire rating requirement around those spaces, but that's, that's being taken into consideration and will be, anything that needs to be provided at time of building permit will be.
I just had a brief question. This will be a medical office building, not a hospital?
That's correct. And there's no overnight stays?
It's completely outpatient. A fairly nice-sized facility for that, but it is completely outpatient.
Very good. Thank you.
Just a quick question on how you term your infiltration beds. I'm assuming it's not underground, but you have, what, piping underground and you're spraying?
So it is, so typical, typically you would, you would have below-ground piping and spray heads and spray above ground. Those systems are typically winterized so that we can remove volume year-round. We're actually doing what is like a, it's like a drip irrigation system.
Drip irrigation underground, so there's no sprinkler heads?
No, no spray, no spray heads unless there's separate heads that are installed just purely for landscaping purposes. From a stormwater management standpoint, it'll be stone beds with perforated pipe, and that, it'll get pumped and treated the same way a spray, a spray system would, but it'll get sent to those beds where it'll, it'll perk through the ground.
I've seen that used before. It's interesting.
So those drip irrigation, do you have to, I'm curious, it seems interesting. You have to be below frost depth, so that's like a good, you know, three, three and a half?
It's approximately at that depth, yeah, but we're not sending a, we're not, we're not sending a ton of water there at a time. So the pump kicks on frequently, pulls a small portions of water, and gets sent to those beds, and pump doesn't really kick on until that water, the, will actually infiltrate in and the bed dewaters, and then we run the cycle again. So we have, we have high frequency of cycles with low volumes to each of those beds.
I've seen them in operation before. They're actually pretty slick alternative to traditional spray. Yeah, yeah. If you don't have to shut it down during the winter.
It's really a, you know, we wanted to take into consideration the stormwater concerns in the area, and this, this will provide a year-round treatment for water.
I had one follow-up about pedestrian access. I appreciate that you're showing sidewalk along Hausmann, but there's no connection from that sidewalk to your building. And I personally would prefer to see a sidewalk adjacent to the driveway so people are not walking in there where cars should be, so.
Yeah, we can add a piece of sidewalk there, right where your pointer is. That'll connect straight up through to the site. Absolutely.
As we're, the township's actively, actively pursuing an active transportation plan, safety, and so we're very focused on walkability. And there is a restaurant right up the road, so it would make sense to me. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, we can add that in.
Yeah, and, oh, sorry. No, yeah, just going back on the stormwater. If I'm, I could be wrong, but looking at the plans, then there is like overflow piping that does go to the southwest across Hausmann.
Yeah, there's a...
For like in excess of the 100-year predicted storm?
Yeah, so there's an existing pipe, there's an existing structure that's on, it's in the right-of-way on our side of the road today, an existing pipe that runs across the road. So what we're doing is, you're correct, it's for the higher storms, where we're not going to be holding all that water back. The basin is going to control the flow out of there, but it is going to still go down to that same, that same point that it does in existing conditions. It'll just be at a, a lower rate and less volume.
It seems like it's good for submission. Still have to work out some of the engineering and whatnot. This might be getting a little nitpicky, but some things I just saw because one of your waiver requests is preliminary slash final, so there needs to be a little bit higher detail when you include the final. Just make sure the pipes aren't going into the corner of the inlet boxes. I didn't look at the details for the inlet boxes, but typically you don't want them going into the corner. I know you have to work through some of the stormwater with peak rate reduction and whatnot at certain discharge points. So make sure you coordinate with our township engineer with that. I don't have any other comments or questions. Does anyone else? All right.
If I can ask that, just so we know. Otherwise, on the waivers, I just want to make sure everyone's okay, number one. And number two, I will note, the engineer indicated they were deferring on two of those. We have review letters, but they don't specifically comment on that waiver, but they don't raise it as an issue either. Can we take that as a positive comment, or should I be asking you to make sure that we get the weigh-in if your, if your civil is, is deferring? You guys tell me.
May I, may I suggest you go through them?
Okay.
We might not act on them, but then you can get at least some feedback.
Okay, then let's do that.
Especially for the people online that may not have access to...
Then let's do that. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead. Can just want to walk through them.
Do the waivers?
Yep.
Okay, so waiver one, per the township engineer, is not, not required. I requested a waiver for preliminary slash final, so it's such a permitted process in the township. So we'll remove that from the updated waiver request the next submission.
With your note, Mr. Wilson.
Waiver two requires showing contours on adjacent land within 400 feet of the site. So in lieu of doing, of doing that, performing survey off-site on private property, we're providing an aerial plan with light our contours to show what the surrounding topography would be.
Certainly a common one that happens for every plan, so. Do you want to, do we want to vote on one?
Um, it might be a little early to vote, but I think...
They wanted feedback.
Yeah, we should provide feedback.
Raise an objection if you've got, or otherwise assume we're on the right track.
Yeah, just so you have some direction. It might be a little early to make an official vote, but we, it's good to discuss.
If we vote on something now and you have to change your plan somehow, then...
Sure, but if we get no, we'll assume we're on the right track, so.
Got it.
Okay. So three requires showing location, character, elevation of any building within 100 feet of the track. Similar to the previous requirement, we're providing an aerial plan so we can show the surrounding areas.
So for number three, I believe there was an engineering objection.
No.
And this is a pretty common.
Yeah, they're typically plan drafting comments. You've seen them in the past. It can be accomplished by an aerial plan. It's up to you how you want to handle it.
Yeah, this is, my, just my, I'm only one person. My input is that's a reasonable waiver request.
And we know what happened south of the project with the Longs Water Technology. That's fairly...
I have a little idea, right?
Okay, number four requires showing location, widths of all sidewalks, trails, driveways, streets, easements, and right-of-ways plotted or proposed or existing in the subdivision and within 400 feet of any part of any subdivision tract. So again, short of getting on private property and performing a survey, we're providing an aerial.
Yeah, that's a reasonable request.
Okay. Number five requires constructing a concrete driveway apron. I was requesting a waiver for that to provide consistency with the, the overall driveway entrances along Hausmann and the surrounding areas. I believe the Longs Eagle Water driveway was without the driveway apron, the one across the street is as well.
Yeah, so essentially for those in the audience, there will be a paved, an asphalt-paved driveway into the property instead of a concrete apron. The next-door neighbor had a similar waiver. I don't see the necessity of having a concrete paved driveway.
And, and you're showing a crosswalk, so that's always my concern, you know, sometimes, sometimes concrete can identify that some, something's changing, but as long as you have it marked, I'm fine.
This will be delineated without the need for...
Yep.
Okay. Number six was a request waiver for providing streetlights along Hausmann Road. Again, for consistency of what's there now, but that is going to be deferred to your lighting consultant for further review. I will say, we did get a letter of approval from them saying that we were providing consistency with township ordinance on our lighting design, but more than happy to circle back to them to make sure they are considering this with their letter as well. Okay, so we did not require it for Long?
If I recall, for Potta, that came up, and the eventual decision was to defer it until such time as the neighborhood requested it. So...
What about Longs Water Technology?
I think it was similar.
Similar, yeah.
Deferral rush, and I think we deferred it in case sometime down the road we, we do that. But we'll double-check that.
I don't think we have any issues changing that.
Yeah.
And number, number seven was the stormwater management ordinance for showing locations of all public water supply wells within 400 feet of the project, private water supply wells within 100 feet of the project. We'll defer back to the geotech for that. They did not comment on that, but we'll, we'll make sure that we circle back with him as well to make, to make sure he's considering it. I will say, I know that the requirements specifically related to setbacks, considering where our infiltration facilities are and the separation between that Hausmann Road alone creates, where we don't have any setback concerns, but that's really where the waiver request is coming from.
And you have public, you're proposing public sewer?
And public water.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, that's reasonable, but we would defer to geotech. All right, so those are the waiver requests. Is there anything else you wanted to present?
Oh, I think that's it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. There, I believe there is one interested party in the audience here. If you'd like to come and speak. Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience? No? Anyone online? No? Okay. All right, so I think, any follow-up questions?
I have a question, but it's not necessarily for you all, it's for township staff. I believe when the Longs were in, they had deferral on sidewalk?
Only in as much, sorry, only in as much as there was a rush to get into the building. So the right-of-way improvements were deferred until after the CO was issued. The CO was issued, and they are now working on constructing the right-of-way improvements.
Okay.
So, yeah, it was a very short-term deferral with a defined time limit.
All right, so it seems like the, you know, this is a pretty good first submission. You have to work through some of the stormwater comments. I believe, you know, you could work through that with Pitcock and, you know, make a resubmission and come back, and hopefully you get to the finish line. All right, does anyone want to?
I'll make a motion to take the plan under advisement.
I'll second.
Attention of time.
I thought so it was Mark.
I will remake that motion, contingent on him signing that paper that he's signing right now.
I'll second.
You know what I do? I sign really messily, and it actually says no on the signature line. That's the trick I use. No, I'm kidding.
We can, we can vote.
I'm absolutely kidding. You know that.
There's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks and good luck. All right. We are on Agenda Item 4B, Lot Line Adjustment and Consolidation Plan for Al Ahad Islamic Center. Request for Preliminary Final Plan Review. Mr. Adams, would you like to do the staff review?
Yes. This is an application to consolidate the lots located at 1410, 1500, and 1504 Ridgeview Drive. The plan proposes to create a single parcel containing 7.909 acres and two single dwelling units, which are to be removed, and a place of worship. The property is to be served by public water... The property is to be served by public water and public sewer and is zoned R3 low-density residential. Jaffa Reachout Foundation is the owner of 1410 and 1504 Ridgeview. Shia Ithna Ashiri Jamat of PA is the owner of 1500 Ridgeview Drive. Jaffa Reachout Foundation is the applicant. As you recall, the applicant was in in 2020 and 2021 to basically raise the existing mosque and replace it with the mosque that is going in today. And that mosque had been approved back in 1999. So the department recommends that the planning commission recommend preliminary final plan approval to the board of commissioners subject to the applicant complying with the following conditions. One, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall execute subdivision improvement, security, maintenance, and indemnification agreements acceptable to the township and its solicitor. That sufficient security in a form acceptable to township be posted, that such security be available for draws, presentations, no further than 60 miles from township office, and evidence of insurance coverage in an amount satisfactory to township in its sole discretion shall be provided prior to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant address to the satisfaction township engineer the comments of Mr. Anthony Talarida as contained in his review dated January 4, 2024. The applicant shall provide the community development department written confirmation from the appropriate reviewing agency that all applicable comments have been addressed. Three, the applicant addressed the satisfaction township order and sewer engineer the comments of Mr. Jason Newhart as contained in his review dated January 2, 2024. Five, four, that the applicant addressed the satisfaction community development department the comments of Mr. Greg Adams as contained in his review dated January 4, 2024. Five, that the applicant addressed the satisfaction public works department the comments of Mr. Herb Bender as contained in his review dated January 3, 2024. Six, the applicant complies with the forthcoming recommendation of landscape and shade tree commission. Seven, that the applicant addresses all issues and obtains all approvals deemed necessary by the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners insofar as matters pertaining to township's water and sewer service are concerned. Eight, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall dedicate to the township additional rights of way along the fringe of Ridgeview Drive at a width acceptable to township. Dedication shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. Dedication shall be by deed of dedication in form acceptable to the township solicitor and an opinion of record title shall be prepared by the applicant's counsel indicating the dedication is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor description for the dedication that has been approved by the township engineer and a copy of the current deed for the property showing current ownership and recording information. Nine, the plan may be recorded only after the township's review and approval of language addressing such, any such matters as the township terms to be advisable for inclusion in documentation relating to the condominium association. Such documentation need not be recorded with the Lehigh County Recorder of Deeds prior to the plan recording. However, any such condominium association documentation shall be recorded to the satisfaction of the township prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, temporary or permanent, for any land development on the consolidated parcels. Ten, that the applicant coordinates with township's engineering office to have addresses assigned to the plan of record. Eleven, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for township engineering and legal services prior to the plan being recorded. And 12, that the plans are to be revised and deemed to be clean prior to them being presented to the board of commissioners. The planning commission's soft deadline to act on the plan is February 19, 2024. The board of commissioners' hard deadline to act on the plan is March 20, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I forgot to poll everyone in the audience. Are there any interested parties? No? Or is there anyone online specifically interested? No? All right. Ms. Bet, would you like to do your township engineer review?
Sure. As Mr. Adams has mentioned in our January 4 memo to the township, our comments include minor plan drafting requirements. To satisfy several of the items contained in our memo, a waiver and deferral request letter was submitted during this review cycle, which identifies three waivers and one deferral. The waiver requests are specific to drafting requirements of a minor plan. We have no engineering objection to these waivers. The deferral request is for the frontage requirements along Ridgeview Drive, specifically lot three, so it's the southern lot on the plan. We note that lot three does not contain any existing sidewalk. The existing driveway, if it is to remain, does not have a concrete apron, and the half-width of cartway and right-of-way on Ridgeview Drive is just shy of Collector Road standards. We have discussed this deferral request with township staff and have no engineering objection as we agree with Mr. Adams and staff's review letter. At this time, conditioned on addressing items in our January 4 memo, we can recommend engineering approval.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bet. Would the applicant like to come to the podium? Hello again.
And the mic's on for me. I like that. Eric Shock from Fitzpatrick Lenson Bubba and Don Peters from Bowler. So, you know, as Mr. Adams indicated, the primary use of the property is the mosque that is in the process, probably all of you have seen, of being rebuilt. There's a couple of other things that have now come into play, one of which is the mosque nor the patrons of the mosque did not own the properties north and south of the mosque property at the time that it went through the land development process to have the new mosque building approved. Since then, those have been acquired by the Jaffa Foundation, and Mr. Jaffa is one of the patrons of the mosque. We were at the zoning board recently because the acquisition of the property, particularly the northern one, allowed the mosque to add a fifth minaret. So as you may have seen, there were four minarets out there. The goal actually was five. They could not fit that within the property without needing zoning relief originally, so they didn't pursue it. They were trying to comply. We've now gone to zoning and gotten relief to add that fifth minaret, and that's, that is under, that will be underway. Building plans being processed for that. However, to do that, there was a condition that we, we essentially remedy the setback deficiency in one of two ways. Either do a lot line adjustment to take a strip, probably about 10 feet. Doesn't need to be, but take about 10 feet from the northern property and add it. Or frankly, the idea is more of a master plan for the future to potentially put some auxiliary uses for the mosque on the properties that the foundation has acquired for the benefit of the mosque. So at this point, we're looking to consolidate those with the only twist on a traditional consolidation being frankly a non-planning issue of them doing it by the condominium, which we will work out with your, with your solicitor's office. And that's solely because of the fact, of the interrelationship between the mosque owning the actual original mosque property and the Jaffa Foundation. Again, a major patron of the mosque, having acquired these for the benefit of the mosque. We'll work that legal issue out, which I don't think in any way plays on this. But at this point, the first step is to just get as a single lot for development purposes for the township, the three lots combined, so we can look at whether we can proceed with some of the other ancillary uses that, that they'll use for kind of, almost like a little bit more of a campus. Like you see candidly at a lot of places of worship, right? Some have schools, you know, some have other facilities. Those, that can be pursued if we add this additional land through this process. As was mentioned, we have some, what I think are fairly benign waivers, but otherwise, other than working out the issue on how to do this with the condominium and the land ownership, it's fairly straightforward. It's, it's two lots of land. And we do appreciate and understand that the use for other than mosque purposes of the buildings that exist on those would not be permitted if we go ahead and consolidate. So in theory, I guess like, for example, we could come back and say the Imam is going to occupy one of those houses, and the township might say that's accessory. Accessory, but I think right now the concern would be we couldn't finalize this if we were renting it out to just a random third party. So we understand that and we'll work that. It's a lot of moving parts. In all candor, we had, we would have hoped to be able to proceed a little bit more, you know, at the same time. But, you know, as you can appreciate, the plan for the, for some of the other, for the ancillary use is taking a little longer, but we can't hold up on getting some of this, some of the other things done. I think from an engineering standpoint, other than us going through the waivers, if you'd like, everything else you're good with, right?
Yeah, this is pretty much removing lot lines. This is, to be clear, not a land development. It's not proposing any new buildings. It's just property lines.
Exactly. This is not, we, you know, we will be back, we hope, with some of those other items, but we, but because of the adding the minaret and trying to get this coordinated, this seemed to be the next step. We filed this as part of that, so we're just going to continue with it.
Have you given a timeframe on when those rentals will not be rentals?
If we are going to file this plan, we understand we'd be in violation if they were still being rented. So, so to me, there's two options. We terminate that and knock them down and file this plan, or we terminate it theoretically, they're vacant and for future use of the, you know, some permitted use, which will, you know, which I will deal with the township on, but we don't know when. It's, part of it's going to depend upon where they are working on some changes that we've discussed with your staff on this master plan. But that architectural firm is going to get back to us. And I'm hoping, you know, to make my life easier, I hope, Don and I hope it comes together soon so that none of this becomes a question, but we'll, we will try, we will time this in a way that we don't violate the rules, and we've told the guys that.
Yeah, and just for clarification, prior to plan recording, we have to have that zoning issue resolved before it can be recorded. So whether it's demoed or you have it as a.
Accessory use.
Accessory use or ancillary.
Future use of the Imam for the.
And we'll handle that through zoning permit.
We'll work that out.
There was a timeframe.
Yeah.
It makes complete sense.
That timeframe is contingent upon the revisions to the master plan, and I don't have an answer on that tonight.
Just to be clear, currently, there would be no zoning issues, but if the plan is consolidated and recorded, they're walking into a zoning violation.
And we won't do that.
Oh, I understand.
So that's self-inflicted if you do that.
Yeah, we will figure it out somehow. I mean, even if it means we take an extra month till we record this plan, you know, because we do have time, you know, we don't have to rush to try to record this tomorrow. We want it approved so it's in place and in sync, but we can time it so that we can figure the other stuff. There's, there's a lot of moving parts. We'll figure out. We are aware of the issues as are, you know, Greg and Dave, and we're on the same page as to how we'll handle it.
Any other questions from the planning commission? I don't have any questions. Anyone in the audience? Is there anyone online? All right, any follow-up questions? So, yeah, so I guess the, the open items are waiver requests, and then are you requesting a conditional approval contingent upon the zoning and whatnot?
Yeah, yeah, so, so we're fine with the conditions that Mr. Adams read to you at the beginning. So our request would be you recommend the waivers and the three waivers, the one deferral. Don can go through those if need be, and then the recommendation that Mr. Adams read.
Yeah, we should, for the record, we should go through the waivers.
Yep, whatever you'd like to do.
So waiver one, Sado section 31223B19 requires showing location, size, and owners of existing buildings, sewer mains, water lines, et cetera, within 100 feet of the track. In lieu of providing surveyed information, which will require obtaining access to adjoining properties, waivers requested to accept the plans as presented. We believe the information is shown is adequate for the township to review the plan for the purpose proposed.
Once again, this is the same graphical request. Guess we'll go one, one by one. First, Ms. Bet, was there, I don't believe there was engineering objection.
We have no engineering objection.
I'll make a motion to approve that waiver.
I'll second. Who's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No, so moved.
Right, number two, from Sado's section 31223B20, which requires showing the location, character, and elevation of any building within 100 feet of the track for the same reasons justification is provided previous, the previous waiver.
Very similar graphical waiver request. Ms. Bet, there's no.
No objections.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Who's in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No, so moved.
And number three, Sado section 31223B21, which requires showing location width of all sidewalks, trails, driveway, streets, easements, and right-of-ways proposed or existing in the subdivision and within 400 feet of any, of any part of the subdivision track. Same reasoning and justification.
Another graphical one. There's no engineering objection. Does anyone want?
That's true.
I'd make a motion to waive that.
Second.
Who's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, so moved. Number four, deferral request.
Yep, number four, Sado section 31235B35 requires frontage improvements, right-of-way dedication, cartway widening, sidewalk, et cetera, for Collector Road. The request is for a deferral of these improvements until such a time a land development plan showing improvements on, on those properties would be submitted.
So it's your intent to actually have a land development plan. My concern is nothing ever happens.
It's, it's just a deferral.
It is only a deferral, so that, that could be addressed.
We've also had trouble pulling in deferrals in the past, so.
Brian, page 75. This is, this is the one that I wrote, and after discussions with township engineer, they're in agreement. So, for example, for the first part, we have no objection to a 24-month deferral to install the sidewalk on lots, on lot three. So should this fall apart 24 months from now, you gotta put the sidewalk in. But if everything moves forward, you're fine. The land development plan will, will take care of that.
24 months?
Or two years? And I was going to say, if, if you can't complete all of the process in 24 months, you can always go back.
Come back. I, I think we're okay with that now because, and as Greg and Dave know, I'm hoping we're going to be back because our client is anxious to keep moving forward. So we'll go with 24 months, and if not, I'll give you an explanation 23 months from now.
Got a lot of money in steel sitting over there. They want to go forward.
Yeah, there's, there's going to be progress. I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, so that addresses lots three sidewalk, the concrete apron on lot three. Once again, should the dwelling be removed and the garage, none would be required. So once again, before the plan is recorded, if there's a garage there after the plan's recorded, you'll need a concrete apron. Then the reconstruct Ridgeview Drive to Collector Road standards. Once again, we have no issues deferring that, that we can call in whenever, but if the land development plan comes in, the engineering determines that it has to be widened at that spot, that will be included. And then the similar for the, the Collector Road half-width as well.
All right, so.
You're okay with all those as presented? So I'll make a motion to provide the deferral with those recommendations as Greg submitted.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No, no opposed? No, no opposed. So moved.
Our client's intention that those will be moved. So.
Okay. So the, those are the waivers and then we need to make a motion or are you requesting a, anything else?
Requesting, uh, preliminary final approval conditioned on satisfying the items as mentioned.
Yeah, I'd make a mention or make a recommendation for a preliminary slash final conditional approval conditioned on Greg's 12 conditions and maybe in reference to Greg's, uh, language on page 75 with regards to deferrals. I would make that motion.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. So moved.
Good. Thanks for your time.
All right. Good luck. All right. We're on agenda item 4C, 1429 Eck Road Outdoor Storage Request for Preliminary Final Plan Review. Mr. Adams, would you like to do the staff presentation?
Yes. This is an application to develop the property located at 1429 Eck Road. The plan proposes to construct a 79 trailer space parking area, 12 of which are to be utilized as the 16 reserve park, standard parking spaces and eight standard parking spaces and a 16 four mentioned reserve standard parking spaces, a guard shack, all on the 5.11 acre parcel. The property is to be served by public water and public sewer and is zoned industrial commercial one special height limitation IC one. Triple Net Investments CI LLC is the equitable owner and applicant. This plan has been before you before at your, wow, October 19th, 2023 and January 11th, 2024 meetings. Zoning hearing board granted special exception approval with 15 conditions and a variance on November 28th, 2022. And the planning commission had reviewed the sketch plan as early as December 15th, 2022, and then again, September 15th, 2022. So the community development department recommends that the planning commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting township a waiver to the timeframe to act upon the plan. However, should the planning commission find the plan sufficient to advance them to the board of commissioners, we would recommend that the applicant comply with the following conditions. One, that the applicant shall execute subdivision improvement, security, maintenance and indemnification agreements acceptable to township and its solicitor. That sufficient security in a form acceptable to township be posted. That such security shall be available for draws presentation no further than 60 miles from township's office. And evidence of the insurance coverage in an amount satisfactory to the township in its sole discretion shall be provided prior to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction township engineer, the comments of Mr. Anthony Talarida as contained in his reviews dated January 4th and February 2nd, 2024. The applicant shall provide the community development department with written confirmation from the appropriate reviewing agency that all applicable comments have been addressed. Three, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction township's geotechnical consultant, the comments of Mr. Chris Taylor as contained in his review dated January 31st, 2024. Four, that the applicant addressed the satisfaction township lighting consultant, the comments of Mr. Corey Trumbauer as dated in his review dated December 18th, 2023. Five, that the applicant addressed the satisfaction community department, the comments of Mr. Greg Adams as contained in his review dated February 1, 2024. Six, that the applicant addressed the satisfaction township zoning officer, the comments Ms. Laura Harrier as contained in her forthcoming review. Seven, that the applicant addressed the satisfaction township public works department, the comments of Mr. Herb Bender as contained in his review dated January 3rd, 2024. Eight, that the applicant addressed the comments of the public safety commission as contained in their forthcoming review, which has been provided to both planning commission and the applicant. The nine, the applicant complies with the November 16th, 2023 recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board. 10, that the applicant addresses all issues and obtains all approvals deemed necessary by the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners insofar as matters pertaining to township's water and sewer service are concerned. 11, that the applicant obtains a review from the LVPC provide, prior to the plan being presented to the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. 12, that the applicant obtains a letter from PADEP and or LCCD approving the NPDES permit application pursuant to section 31239E of SADO. 13, that the applicant obtains a letter from PADEP approving the sewage facilities planning module or exemption thereto. 14, the applicant shall dedicate additional right of way for Eck Road to achieve an ultimate right of way of a collector road. The dedication shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The dedication shall be by deed of dedication in a form acceptable to township solicitor and an opinion of record title shall be prepared by the applicant's counsel indicating the dedication is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor a description of the property uh, of the dedication that has been approved by the township engineer and a copy of the current deed for the property showing current ownership and recording information. 15, the applicant shall dedicate to the township a utility easement of sufficient size in an area acceptable to township for accessing the water meter pit. The dedication shall, uh, occur prior to the plan being recorded. The dedication shall be by deed of dedication in a form acceptable to township solicitor and an opinion of record title shall be prepared by the applicant's counsel indicating the dedication is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor a description of the dedication that has been approved by the township engineer and a copy of the current deed for the property showing the current ownership and recording information. 16, that the applicant shall agree upon satisfactory completion of all storm, storm sewer, water and sanitary sewer facilities shown on the plan as intended for dedication of the township to execute formal bills of sale for said facilities so as to convey said facilities to the township for nominal consideration. 17, that the applicant shall be responsible for making necessary arrangements with the municipality and the public service company involved for streetlights as proposed on the plan and approved by the board of commissioners and shall be further responsible for providing utility easements for lighting standards and fixtures in accordance with section 31241A1A of SADO. 18, that the applicant coordinates with the township engineer's office to have addresses assigned to the plan of record. 19, that the applicant shall execute a declaration of covenants and easements for maintenance of stormwater management facilities prepared by the township solicitor for maintenance of the onsite stormwater management facilities. 20, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for township engineering legal services prior to the plan being recorded. And 21, that the plans are to be revised and deemed to be clean prior to them being presented to the board of commissioners. The planning commission's soft deadline to act on the plan is February 19th, 2024. The board of commissioners hard deadline to act on the plan is March 20th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Um, I, I'd like to pull the audience. Are there any interested parties in the audience here? All right, great. And is there anyone online? No one's online. Okay. Okay. All right. We'll go through the, the applicant's presentation and planning commission question. What? Oh, I apologize. I'm getting ahead of myself. Um, Miss Bet, would you like to do your engineering review?
Sure. Um, as Mr. Adams has mentioned, our February 2nd letter to the township was for the review of a partial preliminary final plan submission. Our comic, our comments excluding a few continue to apply from our January 4th memo. The item in which you may want to further discuss is the frontage improvements along the Pushkar property. The applicant has met with township staff and staff has provided Mr. Pushkar with three options for improvements along his property. As described in the packet, a deferral was requested for frontage improvements to the full extent in front of the Pushkar property. A proposed, proposed curve line and roadway widening has been provided on the plans to tie in to the widening improvements, improvements for the Cracker Support Road and Eck Road warehouses project. The applicant should discuss any updates regarding the extent of the frontage improvements. There are six additional waivers that have been requested. We and the geotechnical consultant have no objections to these waivers.
Thank you, Miss Bet. Would the applicant like to do their presentation? And hello for the third time.
I, I have a business card if you need it, but, but I think you might know. Uh, Eric Shock from Fitzpatrick, Lenzen, Booba. Marty Smith is with me and Joe Petrucci from Triple Net is here. We are, we will be glad to talk about anything else if you want, but I mean, you've seen this quite a few times. And I think last time we were here, it was like, there's really only the one item to talk about that your engineer indicated, which is the, uh, the improvements, uh, in front of the Pushkar property based upon the fact that for I, for, not for good or for bad, but for bad, we unfortunately own a very odd sliver that goes in front of that property, right? Creates this anomaly. As the engineer indicated, there were three options. Um, I know staff has made attempts and I, I will say Mr. Pushkar is here and Mr. Petrucci and Mr. Smith spoke to him again. And if you want to just say where things are, because that's the, you know, at the end of the day, it is what it is, right?
Oh, yes. Marty Smith with Panion Lights Engineering. We did design of the plans. Part of the directive of, from the last meeting, we met back and made a revised set of plans uh, where we attempted to draw some improvements that connected the full width frontage improvements in front of the main property with those improvements that were extended down from the intersection improvements. In drawing those, I made an assumption that there was a 33 foot right of way on Eck Road. I was, that was an incorrect assumption. There's only standard being a 24 foot right of way when there's been no road right of way created. As such, there is no, the existing edge of pavement now is currently almost outside of that default right of way. So there is no way to in, install any improvements along that frontage of the Pushkar property without requiring some additional right of way, uh, from the property owner. At this time, he's expressed that he's not willing to provide any additional right of way or want any additional improvements in front of that part, you know, in front of his property there. As Eric noted, the base parcel that, that we have is strangely shaped. You've got the main five acre parcel deeded out to the center, center line of Eck Road. It extends about 10 feet wide or so. It's shaded up on the plan there in front of the Pushkar property and then has another five foot sliver that goes along, uh, the north side of his property between that and the junkyard parcel. Uh, so we've attempted to do what we can as far as improvements there. At this time, we're just, you know, looking for some direction from this body and the township, how to proceed.
In all case, you know, we can't have this become Groundhog Day, right? Where we just keep doing the same thing. Not trying to be difficult. We have tried, but you know, last time we were hoping you'd be able to do something, but you, you know, I look at this and say, we're making a deferral request, but in some respects, it's not even a deferral because we can't even make any improvements in that area. So, you know, this is it. I mean.
We're just talking about, you can't do the improvements in front of Pushkar's house. He's not willing to give any right of way and doesn't want anything to do with the property. So your hands are tied.
Yeah.
Township's not willing to condemn it.
I don't make that decision. I have no idea.
Been an option presented to this.
Yeah.
Not your property.
And, and you wouldn't be required to do it on anybody else's property in any other situation other than.
No. I mean, that's the point, right? Right? We can't do, you don't need a deferral to not do improvements on someone else's property. As it turns out, this odd sliver we own in the front doesn't even allow us to do the improvements anyway. So I mean, I would argue, you don't even need relief because we'll do whatever you want in there because we can't do anything, right? But be that as it may, we, we're trying to remain cooperative, which is, we're stuck now. And, you know, unless, unless circumstances changed in the very near future and there were right of way available, we can't do anything.
So, so my understanding is you are willing to make those road widening improvements, but you can't because you're beholden to Mr. Pushkar because that's his property and he has his property rights.
Exactly.
And you're doing the full improvements along your property.
That's right.
Yep.
Yeah.
And you're going to have a sort of a transition from, from Poonjar to, to your property.
I mean, we can, you know, discuss, how you want that.
Yeah.
There's a transition. I mean, the initial drawing is.
My, my concern with it just dropping there is the trailers from this operation, if they're going north, are going to cut through his front lawn.
Why we're here to, you know, we can work out with.
I think there's. There's options that we can.
And that's what the improvements curve and that transition, if there was, if it was willing to have the right of way, those improvements would be in place. So there would be curb and there wouldn't be that issue. Um, so it, it's, yeah.
I mean, if there's.
It's kind of a physical situation.
I mean, that could happen anywhere.
Yes.
I mean, I would hope they'd stay on the road. That's why.
I mean, we, you know, certainly coordinate with public works or, you know, appropriate transition.
Yeah.
That north and.
Yeah.
To mitigate those.
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, as we said from the beginning, we will do whatever, whatever we can do. But you, you, you can't do something that's impossible, right? I mean, that's.
I think appropriate. Property rights.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think an appropriate trans, uh, at the median between the two properties, improvements somehow.
Yeah.
Translate, um, is what it is.
It guides, it guides vehicles that there's a change happening.
Side striping, whatever it'd be.
Yeah.
My understanding, this has been ongoing for several months and it's been the same issue.
When did you identify this problem with the anomaly?
The, so we identif, we saw it when we started going through the deed review and proposed dedicating that strip to the township from the beginning. Then it was during township review that it's, oh, that's a subdivision. Frontage in front of this other property subdivision. Trigger doing road improvements. Quote unquote, frontage, even though we didn't.
Yeah.
Have enough frontage to do the.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I think one of the original proposals was if you wanted that sliver, in case you ever acquired more, you could have it. And, and there's another odd sliver up the side, right?
Yeah. What's happening there? Are you proposing frontage improvements there to tie in with the KMP junkyard project?
Is there any, is there improvements going on to the?
I think it's five feet.
Yes.
And we can work on whatever the transition needs to be.
Yeah.
Between the.
I understand there are plans.
So in the Pidcock letter, it has about stormwater management. Now that we beat that to death about the frontage. I'm worried about the conveyance of runoff from your site onto the Pushkar property. It says, we note the proposed grading would appear to concentrate runoff. And there's a lot of water in these, in this vicinity. I live on the southern part of Eck Road, so.
Yeah. And I've had the conversation with the township engineer. I disagree with their assessment on there. We're cutting off all runoff going to that property of the berm that is required by the ordinance for the buffering. That berm forms a drainage divide. So.
Can we show, do we have the grading plan to show that?
My position is in our calculations show there's no more water draining over that way. Post developed conditions, current condition. It's all going to be a vegetated, it's going to have the pine trees that are required. Uh, we've extended the berm, or one of the recent comments, all the way up to the Eck Road right of way that further cuts off any potential drainage going towards the Pushkar. You know, you have that strip that's.
Um, Brian, I can speak to it.
Twenty feet wide or so, the, the berm. Twenty feet wide or so of the berm.
Yeah. In reviewing the proposed grading, we would understand that would be concentrated. You go from sheet flow to then concentrated and we would like to see the grading a little bit tweaked in there. Not anything crazy, but to alleviate more of a concentrated flow on the adjacent property. So that's why we had that comment in place. We can talk more offline, Marty. About it specifically.
Yeah, there's only so much room there.
Yeah, I understand.
Are you willing to adjust the grading and?
If it physically can be done and I don't have to move anything in my parking lot, whatever work within that right-of-way of the buffer yard, I'll do what I can in that buffer yard.
Greg, would you like to read the recommendation that was handed to us prior to this meeting from the Public Safety Commission?
Yes, and this is from their meeting on Monday evening. The Public Safety Commission made the recommendation that the crosswalk to cross Eck Road be relocated to the northernmost entrance to the Eck Road DC Warehouse property. So basically, it's, it's currently provided at the southernmost entrance of the northern DC Warehouse property. There were concerns about site distances on northbound Eck Road coming up to the railroad track. So the Public Safety looked at that and basically said, yeah, to make it as safe as possible, move it up to the next entrance to the north.
That's where you have the cursor on the.
Yeah, up there.
Right, and we had made, you know, we had initially in our first, one of the earlier plans, had a sidewalk running our whole frontage right up to the railroad tracks. Then it was brought to our intention that there's a pedestrian improvements going on the railroad tracks on the other side. So don't extend the sidewalk all the way to the tracks on our side, make crosswalk. So that was the first attempt. And then the Public Safety's review came back and said, move it to make it safer and we're fine with relocating that crosswalk, you know, wherever along our frontage.
Yeah, and I would also just suggest that you wouldn't necessarily have to continue to sidewalk to the pushcar property because I know with the KMP Junkyard intersection improvements at Eck and Chapman's, that there's no sidewalk on that side of the road. But this would just get people from your project location.
To the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if I could just jump in, the deferral, so I think there, we talked about a deferral for the sidewalk on the railroad side of the driveway. I think it makes sense to defer the sidewalk from where it comes out of the property and meets Eck Road and only run it to that crosswalk because you don't want to encourage pedestrians to go to the non-crosswalk and then the non-pedestrian side of the tracks. So that when, when you get to that deferral, keep that in mind.
So in terms of the portion of sidewalk that not recommended.
Yeah, so the.
Show that with your cursor.
So from the sidewalk, the internal sidewalk that goes to the guardhouse, to the plan right, to the crosswalk shown on the plan, the board should consider deferring that section because you don't want to encourage people to keep walking that way. The idea is to get them to cross at a safe crosswalk and then get on to that side of this, the road so that they can use the railroad track crossing. So it would be that section and as Mr. Height mentioned, wherever the crosswalk comes in to tie into the ADA ramps on the other side of the road, stopping the sidewalk from there down to the pushcar property.
That gets them to the.
So it's a very, yeah, direct route to that crosswalk.
Because there is sidewalk proposed or deferred already north of where the warehouse's.
Yes.
Sidewalk stops now, hopefully to be installed when they do the intersection.
Yes.
Got it.
You okay with that?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we'll, I mean, with the deferral, we'll still account for the area planned for the sidewalk being there. Heard not to be installed.
Well, I got one last thing about truck turn movements or truck movements. Currently, the warehouse's entrances on Eck Road all have signage requesting that the trucks go south until that intersection improvements are done at Eck and Chapman's. Sometimes they obey, sometimes they don't. Would you be willing to do that until that intersection is improved?
Yeah.
It would just help. I've seen, because I live on Eck Road, full disclosure, 1273, which is south of the railroad tracks. Bankos, my neighbor.
I beep when I go by.
A lot of people do.
I know.
People stop and I don't know who they are. Anyway, I lost my train of thought. No, I've, I've actually seen a tractor trailer going north at that intersection and another tractor trailer on Chapman's having to back up on Chapman's. So it's not really a safe movement, so. Any kind of signage you do.
Yeah.
Would be great.
We can play some.
Until that intersection is hopefully done. Thank you.
Anyone else on the planning commission have questions?
There's one more concern. Because the roadway is top coated as part of the neighboring properties of the Eck Road warehouses, there's, normally there would be a township moratorium. Since the roadway hasn't even entered the maintenance period, the agreements are probably going to have to be, the security agreements are probably going to have to be tweaked so that you're taking ownership for your section. So we'll probably have to amend their agreement and your agreement for that section of road. That makes sense.
Take it out of their responsibility.
Yes.
Is what you're saying.
Yes.
We're going to cut it up.
You're going to cut it up, so you should take responsibility and then have maintenance responsibility for that section.
They would, they would have to do the half width, right? From the center line?
Yeah, and that's.
Yeah.
We're trying to avoid utility cuts because.
Yeah, and we'll, we can work, Herb and I were talking about it earlier and we'll have to iron that out and whether he, you know, wants horizontal cut or a per half width.
Is that then, I mean, we do have, currently have the waiver request for that opening because of the process right now.
So the waiver for the moratorium?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there, it's not under moratorium. So is, is, the timing is kind of weird right now. So we have to kind of address it through the agreements and the security.
Technically, the road's still under construction.
Yes.
All right. Any other planning commission questions?
Just generally, we've, you know, we've received all the comment letters from the different township staff and consultants and are fine with all the comments included there and addressed some of them already with this latest minimal submission, resubmission.
All right, thank you.
Just a point of clarification for me and sorry, you talked, we talked about it earlier, the stormwater concern, kind of going from a sheet flow to more channelized flow. Where are we seeing that? Just between the strip of curb and where the berm starts? Or are we worried about sheet flow coming off the parking lot, hitting the berm and flowing?
I'm making, if you go to the grading plan, you can see it better with the, with the berm grading coming up. The site falls, Eck Road's high and drains down towards the railroad tracks. So as I'm tying in my contours for the berm along the property line there, it's potentially concentrated.
Off, on the, I guess it'd be the E.
The, the plan left or the north of the property.
Yeah, northeast.
Like kind of right here.
That we're talking about.
How many square feet of area is that about?
The buffer strip is 50 feet wide and I forget how long that property line is and then my berm is.
Concentrated.
You know, is three quarters of the way through that. So.
It's, it looks like the left edge of, of that buffer strip.
That property line is like 240 feet long, no wait, 450 feet long and 50 feet wide. So half of that, because I've got my berm down the middle of it, so half of that would be draining towards, towards the north there.
So there's like three or four contour lines out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you can work something out with engineering.
As we've discussed before, we can top offline and.
Yeah, thanks. I was just trying to picture where we're on the plan. My only concern would be is if you try to steepen that at the back to carry your berm further, you could end up with an erosion issue on the, on the other side.
Yeah, I tried to get the berm up as high as we could.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, yeah.
Are you planning to dig out or fill in or how are you going to level this? I'm assuming it's going to be level.
Yeah, the, the, the parking area itself is generally pretty flat. We are, the berm will be filled. Rip the topsoil from the property, utilize the topsoil for the berm. The end of the truck parking area closest to Eck Road is about at grade. And we'll be filling as we go towards the railroad track. Be, it's going to go up and down a little bit in the lot itself, but we're, the area closest to Eck is not being disturbed, it's remaining at existing grade. It's going to be our spray irrigation field.
So no retaining walls or nothing?
There is a retaining wall along the detention basin.
Right.
On the one edge of parking and that basin where we're digging, obviously digging there.
Right.
Using most of that material on the site for.
I, I meant like retaining wall along Eck Road.
Not along Eck, no, Eck, it's, you know, it's going to look, it's going to start to drop off just like it does now. Have our fence and then the truck area will be relatively level from there. Just have grading down towards the railroad right-of-way.
Okay. Any other questions from the planning commission? Oh, I think we got to do audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would, that has comments or questions? Is there anyone online? All right. No one, no comments from the audience, no comments online. I guess we won't have any follow-up questions. Any, no? All right, so there were some waivers and deferrals that we were discussing.
I can go down the initial list that I had just submitted recently, some of which we may discuss and alter here.
And that's page 131 of the agenda packet, I believe.
I printed out my own copy of it.
It is 131. My packet.
All right, the first waiver we just discussed briefly, we were requesting a waiver from section 30427A, requesting waiver from the requirement to not excavate or open a paved and improved street surface less than five years old. Request is made to allow for required road widening, sanitary connection and water connections, including a fire hydrant. Understanding from the conversations this evening, that may not be necessary since it's not.
Not applicable.
Not applicable.
Right, so you're going to withdraw that one?
So we can, you know, withdraw that waiver request. Next waiver, I think you've heard before this evening, section 31212B15, requesting a waiver from the requirement to show existing and proposed contours within 400 feet of the project site. Request is made to allow the plans to be legible at the scale of one inch equals 50. Plans currently show approximately 200 feet beyond the property line.
All right, we've seen this request a few times tonight. Their engineering objection?
No.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
To give a waiver from SALDO 31212B15.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, so moved.
Our next waiver request is SALDO section 31212B21, waiver from the requirement to show existing sidewalks, trails, driveways, streets, extensions and right-of-way, et cetera, within 400 feet of the site. Request again is made to allow the plans to be at one inch equals 50 and we are showing approximately 200 feet beyond the property line.
Their engineering objection?
No engineering objection.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
There's a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, so moved.
Our next waiver is section 31235B8B and requesting a waiver from the requirement to grade beyond the right-of-way line in order to provide a continuous slope. The request is made to allow for the collection of stormwater runoff within the proposed driveway required for our volume and rate control. The key part of that one is the continuous slope. We have a grade break in there in order to get a low point and capture the water before it goes out to the street.
And this is to help improve?
It's to capture all, so we're proposing impervious with the driveway. It's a means that I can put an inlet in there and capture that runoff.
Is there engineering objection?
No engineering objection.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'm moved.
I'll just add that according to our engineering letter, it really should have been 31235B38882.
Okay. A lot of numbers.
That's true.
We'll note that correctly on the plan.
Yeah.
Did we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all right. Is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so moved.
Next waiver is section 31236C5A and this waiver to request a requirement limiting the driveway width to a maximum of 40 feet at the right-of-way line. The request is made to allow for the necessary driveway curb radii to accommodate trucks entering and exiting the site. Domination of the 28-foot wide drive, 60-foot curb radii result in a driveway that is 69 feet wide at the right-of-way line. We are proposing striping out along that driveway so it visually looks narrower and, you know, has the, has a 28-foot wide, you know, drive aisle there. It's been a wide open pavement.
Same thing was done across the street.
Yeah, I believe it's a similar condition there.
Yep.
Their engineering objection?
No engineering objection.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, so moved.
Next waivers for section 31239D2, requesting a waiver from the requirement to have the basin minimum lodge and tudinal slope to be 2%. The basin is proposed to have an impervious liner installed, which will limit any chance of sinkholes forming. The basin is a, we're utilizing for, hold the water for spray irrigation. So there's, it'll be a pump in there that draws down the water that's held during the two-year storm and other storms that spray out. And it is a PVC liner that will be in the basin and any sinkholes and keep the water in there.
It won't affect the maintenance of the basin?
No, no, it's, there's like 12 inches or more topsoil that's on top of the liner, so it's protected from anybody going in there from the, do any station cleaning, mowing, anything like that.
Fairly standard. There any engineering objection?
We deferred to the township geotechnical consultant on this one.
And I don't think they objected. And I don't think they objected.
There been any feedback from the, from Hanover Engineering?
Yeah, I think it's here.
Yeah.
It's, uh, yeah, the consultant previously stated, I didn't remember who responded, though waivers no longer requested as the basin is to be fenced. Both sidewall slope 3 to 1 is in there? No, that's sidewall slope.
Bottom of 114?
Yes.
Okay.
No objection.
Yeah, it's the bottom of 114. They have no objection.
Okay, yeah, this is pretty standard. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
There's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, so moved.
Yeah, so the last one is what are we doing with regard to frontage and front push car, right? I mean, as I said, I'm not even sure you need to defer or waive improvements because there is not.
Yeah, my, my.
We propose dedicating that strip because if you ever got the rest of the right-of-way, you would need this strip, right?
Yeah, my understanding is you're willing to improve it, but it's not your property. It's Mr. Pushkar's property and he has his property rights to, if he wants his land, he has the right to it. And I don't believe the township will move forward with trying to do a taking or anything.
Any comment from the solicitor?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty clear. I mean, this is now becoming out of the purview of this board and it's essentially can only be addressed by the governing body here. So I think the applicant has made a very fair, reasonable, and numerous attempts to address this with the property owner. And it's a situation where, where the hands are tied. So I think it is up to the governing body to make a decision if, if they are going to step forward here or not. And I think the township needs to coordinate some communication on, on its behalf with the applicant and with Mr. Pushkar, or else this is going to remain in a standstill.
I think from the planning commission's point of view, I could add, I would think just the first sentence of the condition that I had distributed earlier, which reads, "That the applicant shall revise the plan to show the dedication of the applicant's land between the legal right-of-way of Eck Road and the Pushkar property as right-of-way and any improvements acceptable to township engineer therein."
Fine, and we, and we know that's not at this point, right?
Correct.
But then we dedicate it, because you'll need it if you ever.
Right.
Or who knows? The property could get sold, someone could propose a plan for something and want to make those improvements, you need the right-of-way.
And they already have it then, so, yeah.
The only thing I ask is you take a hard look at the transition from your widening to.
Yeah, or we'll look at the, yeah, road speed, you know.
Even if you have to put in a curb that they ripped out later, or, you know, something. They've ripped out other curb on the southern part of Eck Road to widen, so.
Now, now, we do have another deferral request that was not requested, however, given the, the pedestrian crosswalk changing and the discussion on the sidewalk.
Right.
We can, if you wanted to.
As discussed, you're going to, you're going to defer the sidewalk to the southern, south of your proposed interior sidewalk constructed to the north, to the north entrance of the industrial park across the street, and then you're going to discontinue sidewalk to the north from that point.
That's for a deferral on the sidewalks beyond those limits.
Correct.
I would just, I would just ask, when we have the plan and we're going before BOC, we have that clearly delineated.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect.
All right, so.
I'd make a, I'd make a motion as stated.
That's for the deferral.
The deferral.
I'll second. There's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, so moved. And now we need to make a decision on the frontage improvements and it's, at this point, it's beyond our.
Well, I guess we're going to do it the way Greg said. We're going to, you're going to dedicate it, you're not going to improve it, you're going to improve it along your property. And that was in your, your conditional statement?
That would be an additional condition.
An addition, addition, addition to your, I think you had 21 items plus that, and our conditional approval would be based on Greg's conditions plus the extra for the, let's say, reduction of improvements to Eck Road on property that's not yours.
And then I would also add that the issue of the, the road, whose, whose responsibility it is can be addressed in condition one where we talk about the agreements. So that part we can hash out as part of the agreements.
Agreeable.
So it's Greg 21 plus?
Plus. With a right-of-way in front of the push car.
And that's a conditional final?
Preliminary final.
Preliminary final. I'll make a motion for the conditional preliminary final based on Greg's recommendations, 21, and the, I believe, two additions. One addition, sorry.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
There's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, so moved.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, we're on agenda item number five, zoning ordinance amendments. Fences and retaining walls. More fun.
I'm going to apologize because I missed last meeting and I know you guys discussed it at the last meeting.
Hey, Mr. Adams, would you like to do your presentation?
Sure, to our steadily bleeding audience. Staff has been aware of an issue within the zoning ordinance with regard to fences and retaining walls. The current section stipulates the fences four feet in height and under do not require a permit. However, staff has noticed a number of small fences that appeared within the clear-sight triangles of intersections, on township easements, and within township right-of-way. Additionally, any fence required holes to be dug also require a PA 1 call. Staff requests that the requirement for fences to, to secure a permit be extended to all fences so that such issues may be caught before the fence is installed. The original proposed ordinance amendment was included in zoning ordinance service pack 2C, which was reviewed by the planning commission at their July 21, September 15, October 20, and December 15, 2022 meetings. The proposed ordinance amendment as part of that service pack was recommended for approval by the planning commission at their December 15, 2022 meeting. Since the meeting, staff has recommended a number of further changes to the language to clarify the need for building permits in certain situations, to add clear-sight requirements to proposed fence locations, to remove exemptions from the requirement for a zoning permit, and to, to add the requirement for a PA 1 call and clear marking of the fence location prior to installation. At their January 11, 2024 meeting, the planning commission reviewed and made comments to the amendment language, including requesting the definition of the term fence. Whether the ordinance would apply to clear-sight triangles and private streets, the process that the property owner would undergo if found to have an unpermitted fence, and whether the ordinance would apply to invisible fences. Staff reviewed the comments and determined the following. Staff has included the language of the current definition of fence within the zoning ordinance for clarification, and that is at the top of page 191. We're proposing no change to that because, well, we couldn't figure out much, anything better. A fence is a fence is a fence. Staff clarified that the proposed language within the amendment to ensure that the section also applies to clear-sight triangles of private streets that accept public traffic, that was added. So now any private street that is open to public traffic is included in those requirements. Staff recognizes the difficulty of constructing a definition of fence to encompass all possible situations, and has determined that relying on the zoning officer's interpretation is the most practical approach to the issue, with the understanding that the applicant would have to submit a permit to the zoning officer to obtain a review in the first place, or an unpermitted fence would have to generate a complaint before being brought to the zoning officer's attention, and the zoning hearing board may review the zoning officer's interpretation if deemed to be egregious by the property owner. So there is a, a method of, you know, adjudicating the zoning officer's interpretation if it is deemed to be just out there. Staff notes that invisible fences would require an electrical permit application, so at least that would ensure a review of the location before it's installed. So with that, I do have page 191 in green is the existing language. Page 192 and 3 show the changes proposed. The difference is being in the lighter blue toward the bottom of page 192 and at the top of 193 to show the changes made to address private streets. Everything else was kept the same from the previous version that you saw or Mark missed in January. And then the next page, page 194 shows the clean version that incorporates all those changes. So we stand ready to take comments. If need be, tweak it again. If not, we request a recommendation to the board for adoption.
I have problems with the way it's written. I, I foresee a burden on, on, on an average homeowner, the burden to prove or to find out what easements exist on his property and how to calculate a clear-sight triangle. I mean, is he just going to walk into the zoning office and they're going to say to him, oh, well, you have easements on the side yards and rear of your property? Or is he going to have to hire an engineer or do title searches to find out what easements are present on his property?
No, the, the easements are basically what we're concerned with are township easements.
Yeah, but how's he going to know if there's township easements? And for example, in my neighborhood, there is no township easement on the property line.
Yeah, and.
But in most new neighborhoods, there are.
No, 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 we're, we're talking about, for example, stormwater easements or water sewer line easements.
Right.
Not a general easement. The township generally doesn't have a general easement anymore.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, so as I was saying, that's the point. They bring it into us and we let them know if there are easements there. That, that is part of the zoning officer's review is to check for township easements. If they don't come in, and we've had that, we've actually had fences installed right over top, and then when it's discovered by the township, we're in a mess because there's a fence in our easement. Obviously, it's not supposed to be there because according to the deed, it's not supposed to be there. So it becomes a case of, do we get the property in order to remove it because it is illegally there? Or do we have them come in and get an exemption by the board of commissioners, which gets sticky because should that fence have to come down, that gives the township the right to take down the fence and not the requirement to replace it. So that, that's what we're trying to avoid.
Just, just to kind of clarify the process, as it works now, the zoning, a homeowner comes in with their fence permit, they indicate where it is on the plan. If there, what's that?
Are you talking about a hand-drawn plan?
A hand-drawn plan, and it'll just kind of mark how far from property lines. The zoning officer will review that, and we have a applica, GIS application that has all of our utilities on it. If there is a utility shown on the map on that parcel, then it gets sent down to the utility. And then they review it and go out and look and see where they're marking it. And then, so the burden is really not on the property owner to have something surveyed or do the deed research to look for the easement. It's really on our, as staff, to ensure that, and let the residents know that there's an easement there. Here's where you can put your fence. So it's really this staking of it prior to the installation is going to help us and the utility go out there and see if it's okay where it is. So it's not, and believe me, we're, we are very conscious of making it too burdensome for applicants. You know, I, in an ideal world, we would get surveys for every fence permit to ensure that it's on their property, but that's just too burdensome. And we feel that having things staked out before the installation gives neighboring property owners an opportunity to see where it is, and then it also gives staff an opportunity to see if there's any problems with where it is, including site triangle.
And, and just so you're aware, site triangles aren't what they used to be 15, 20 years ago of X number of feet back versus X number of feet over. These are, these are pen-dot side triangles, which are generally measured from very close to the edge of the intersection right-of-way. So they, on most typical lots, they don't intrude into the private property.
Yeah.
In, in some lots with very odd geometry, they, they may. And that's something the zoning officer can look at and potentially flag. But we anticipate for 95% of these things, the clear-sight triangle won't be an issue to begin with.
And you're saying if a guy comes in that wants to put a fence around his garden, that she's going to waive the requirement for a permit?
Wouldn't say that.
Chicken wire fence with a green post.
So. That's one of the things we were running up against at the last meeting was what's a fence? And what, how do we define what a fence is? So technically, a garden fence would require a permit.
What's that fee?
$50.
But, but once again, remember that, that's why I made the statement. First off, they would have to come in for the permit. And second off, if they don't and no one complains about it, we're not going to go out and look for these things. So basically speaking, the only way one of those would come in is A, if the, you know, property owner is so conscientious as to pull the permit in the first place, or a neighbor complains about it.
What about, what about an existing fence that needs to be repaired? Do they need to come in for a permit? No?
If it's existing, it would be presumed that there was already a permit.
What if it pre-exam, what, I mean, anything before this that's four feet below would not have needed a permit?
Right.
Right.
Or like when would this ordinance?
Right now?
I mean.
Well.
Well, not yet.
The existing one, if there's a six footer or greater, I think.
That would be.
Well, it's, it's above four feet, it would have required a permit.
And there's always the grandfathering provision and like we do with signs, if you're refacing a sign and not changing the dimensions, it's grandfathered. So it'd be a similar treatment of a fence that's being repaired.
I'm only one opinion. I mean, I, I think I heard correctly that in South Wild Township, if I wanted to throw a graduation party for my daughter and put up a tent in the backyard, I would need to get a permit for it?
Depends on the size of the tent.
Size of the tent, yeah. There's, there's a fire code regulation that speaks to that. An easy up, no. At least not a small one. Yeah, we, we do not anticipate suddenly being inundated with fence permits.
How many problems do you have with fences? You, you, you stated that you've had issues. Like, is this a dozen, three dozen?
The issues that we, well, in the past year, there have been half a dozen pretty big problems.
New fences or old?
New.
Yeah, typically new.
Typically new fences. Typically new fences.
Yeah.
The old fences, the utility runs into those and they have to deal with them. And we don't necessarily hear about it. So if there's a water main break and there's a fence in the easement, they have to take the fence out. And those are things that they're trying to avoid moving forward so that the fence isn't there in the first place. And I don't have those numbers.
Yeah, I mean, some of the worst ones Diane might know because eventually, most of the worst ones wind up before the board to ask for, you know, basically a waiver from the township easement. So, you know, it's, it's not a lot, but by the time it reaches the board, it, it becomes a big issue. And we, and we've, we've had one, comes to my knowledge, someone brought in a permit for a fence. Said it was right up against the property line where, where it can be. It was installed and find, we came to find out that they believe their property line was the curb. And so this thing was actually several feet inside the right of way and was blocking clear sight of an intersection because it was within the right of way township road. So the stakeout would have caught that.
I mean, technically, it is their property line, but there's a right of way easement.
The right of way that doesn't allow that stuff in there.
But they, they brought in a permit.
They brought in a permit, yes. But they were erroneous in where they thought their property line was.
But don't, didn't they do a mark out for their one call?
I don't know, one call doesn't mark property line.
But we go out as the township.
That's the process that we're formalizing with this.
Yeah, and if there were, if there were no underground utilities in the right of way at that location, wouldn't have shown anything. It wouldn't, nobody would have checked to see where the property line was. They would have checked to see if there was a utility underneath where the fence was proposed.
Now, the zoning officer is going to go out and check this or just review the plans?
The zoning officer will go out and check. And if the utility needs to go out and check, the utility will go out and check.
What's, what's our current option for enforcement when there is a fence constructed within a right of way where it is not permitted?
They have to take it out.
Or go to the board for an exemption.
That's an option.
What's the board typically, I mean, what's the board's position, Diane? I'm sorry, I know you're obviously.
I don't recall ever hearing a request. While I've been in office.
I was just curious.
Don't remember.
Moved.
And we got, took care of it before.
I remember one 15 years ago. And it was, it also involved a shed that the Public Works Director literally had to take everything out.
Yeah.
And then they wanted to put it back. And he's like, I already ripped this apart once, I'm not doing it again. But that was.
Herb is online and he asked to speak. Unmute request.
Good evening, can everyone hear me?
We sure can.
Yeah, the reason we really need this ordinance on the utility side is we show up to a lot of water main breaks, we have water mains in people's backyards. There's fences right in the easement. There are sheds in our easements. This is an ongoing issue for us to have to address. And to just clarify, when there is a fence in the easement now, we do an indemnification agreement that, that does not have to go back to the board for approval. So we get that drawn up by legal. The township signs it as the township manager, the homeowners sign it. And then it gets notarized and everyone has a full copy and it goes into the property file. I was a big advocate for this because of the issues we have at 1, 2:00 in the morning when we're called out for the main breaks and I'm trying to wake the residents up. And it's just an ongoing issue. There's a lot of fences in the stormwater easements where there's some that are right over the top of the pipe, which the pipe is corrugated metal, which at some point is going to have to be replaced because they rust out. So I just wanted to bring a little light to the issue on the utility side that we are running into.
So in terms of the, the permit application, I'm on the Shade Tree Commission. And whenever someone cuts down a tree, they have to fill out a permit application and it requires a sketch. And they, you know, hand draw something and, you know, it's pretty crude. It's just a quick hand drawn sketch. And then Shade Tree Commission or, you know, soon staff will do, will just go out and take a look and make sure everything's, you know, good. It seems like this is somewhat of a similar process.
Of course, I think that's burdensome actually to cut down a tree, but.
Well, because Shade Tree Commission has jurisdiction within township right of ways. Generally.
Yeah, and I believe the township just has carte blanche jurisdiction in the right of way, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
Well, the, one good thing is if we approve this and it's a problem, we can fix it.
I was just going to make the exact same comment that it would always be amended if we need to add or remove certain provisions of this particular section.
Absolutely, this is not the first time we've amended the fence ordinance in my career here. So, you know, if it works, we keep it. If it doesn't, we change it.
I can't justify telling a guy he can't put his garden fence up without paying $50 for a permit for it. But you all certainly can.
We discussed at the last meeting that I thought, unless my memory is wrong, that we said a garden fence wasn't going to be affected.
It's a fence and it's got posts.
We, we, we tried to, you wanted to look at the definition of fence to try to, you know, do this. And we did. And it became so difficult to narrow down every possible variation of what could be a fence, what couldn't be a fence. So basically, as I said, we, we're going to rely on the township zoning officer's interpretation of that. And, you know, if at some point she determines that, you know, a little two foot high, you know, chicken wire fence that you simply push in with your foot is not a fence.
But then also.
Well, it says four feet.
No, no.
No, 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 that's what it's current is.
So.
The new language is any fence and any wall.
So is it possible to amend the language to say something pushed in the ground as opposed to cemented into the ground? I mean, if a fence is going to have any strength to it, which would be more than a garden fence, it's going to have concrete.
We, we thought about that because, but, I mean, you could push a fence in, I don't.
When you use the word.
Pushing with a sledgehammer. I mean, it's, you know, and, and we thought about, okay, well, do we want to give a depth to it? And you start going down rabbit holes as to, you know, what, what could and couldn't be a fence.
By definition, if I put two courses of block in my landscape bed and filled in behind it, it's a wall.
That's a wall, yes.
Yeah, so I'd have to come in, fill out a zoning permit so I could put two courses of block in my front yard, put mulch behind it. I'm not into that at all.
Or I, I feel like too, you know, we like to think we're all friends with our neighbors, but not everyone gets along. But I feel like a neighbor could just be upset about a neighbor's garden fence or, or land, new landscaping.
Which none of, the fences aren't cheap and the landscaping is not cheap. So, you know, especially now that someone's doing it themselves. But I, I, I'm not, and the word any just doesn't work for me. Any wall, any fence. Well, there's no exceptions, which is I don't like. There should be exceptions to every rule, not every rule.
What about, is, is there compromise to find a distance from the property line?
Because that doesn't address where a township easement could be.
It doesn't address, doesn't address the type of fences.
But if it's right through the middle of the property, it's entering and exiting at one point and another.
Yes, usually yes. But if you move your fence to where it is, you still might cross it somewhere in the interior of the property.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think outside.
But yeah.
Or inside, yeah.
The rabbit hole I started going down that I thought made the most sense was looking at like the diameter of the post in the ground. But then, you know, what do, where do we do the cutoff? You know, a chicken wire fence, the diameter of what gets stuck in the ground is, you know, an eighth of an inch, a sixteenth of an inch.
Still, it's four, it's four feet in height and you stick it in with the green, those green posts, which you have to hammer in the ground, which are in the ground a good eight, nine inches.
Yeah.
So by definition, it's a fence. But I have a very hard time telling somebody who has a garden right off the back of their sliding glass door that you didn't ask the township about that now and you're in violation. Or that they put two feet of block around it and popped a little fence on top of it and now you're in viol-. So I have a very hard time with the word any fence, any wall.
Yeah, I, I would agree. Unfortunately, the, the scenario you outlined would be in violation of the PA one call. You go down eight inches, you've, you've passed that. Did he get a PA one call for his fence? Probably not.
Well, again, if we're going to vote, I want to vote.
I wouldn't think, you know, anything four feet or lower would have substantial posts in the ground. So if there was an issue, you could almost rip it out of the ground.
I, I had a four foot vinyl fence installed in my property just this summer. And it's got concrete in there, it's, it's embedded pretty good. Yeah, I know, this is, this is a difficult problem. I don't know how to properly address it.
It just could become very, it, it could become annoying for the township and homeowner.
Mm-hmm, and that would be a trigger to change it.
But I'd rather not make it in the first place because again, I don't think that, I don't think the burden should be on the homeowner.
I guess is there, is there like a heat map of where utility, Herb, Herb made a comment about water mains running through someone's backyard or storm sewers. I don't personally have that in my, I know it, it kind of runs through, but I don't know, do we have like a heat map of where this, these hotspots are? And could it be like a township signage thing of, hey, don't? Like I know stormwater runs through the park in my neighborhood and then does run between homes. There are a sign you could put at the inlet, you know, storm water, stormwater right of way. Don't put anything here. I know that's, you know.
We would have to increase our budget.
I mean, you guys do newsletters, you can tell people to do PA one calls, you can tell people to do.
Yeah, but I oversee 85,000 acres, I have a lot of neighbors. And there's a lot of people that just don't know anything about the land that they own or the land that's next to them. Until it becomes an issue and then it becomes contentious at least 50% of the time.
I mean, the big thing is water, like utility breaks, like emergency repairs. That's always going to happen.
Yeah, and if it's a, if it's a little fence that you can just pick up, the guys can pick it up and move it and put it back where it was. I mean, that, that's not a problem.
Take a section of the fence out.
Yeah.
Those cases.
Yeah.
But it's just. Pop out an aluminum, you pop out.
It, it, like Herbert mentioned, it become, at 2:00 in the morning, they're digging up somebody's yard, they're digging through their fence. They're going to wake them up and let them know that you shouldn't have put your fence there.
In cases, I'd look, if there's a water main break and there's water shooting all over the place and the only way you slap is to rip the guy's fence out.
Yes.
I think at the end of the day, although the homeowner might be very PO'd, it's an obvious situation where the township had no choice.
Yes, yes.
And that fence shouldn't be there anywhere, right?
No, it shouldn't be there.
And that's already in the ordinance. You can't put anything in township right away. So if you take it out.
Right.
I mean, I hate to say it, but it's out, it's done with.
Yeah.
And they can't.
The problem though becomes then the homeowner is probably going to be pissed at the township and say, you have to pay to fix my fence.
And we can tell them we don't, but.
Is that where this ordinance would solidify the township's authority to remove it? Otherwise, if we do take it out without ordinance to say it shouldn't have been installed there, is our liability for ripping out their fence?
I don't think so.
It would be the terms of the easement that would prevent them from having it there in the first place.
Yeah, what this ordinance is trying to do is to prevent it from going there in the first place.
In the first place, so for new homes or for someone just deciding to put a fence in there existing?
Yeah, exactly, for, for any, any fences that will be installed.
Any fence and any wall.
Yeah.
By definition.
So the premise of this is still relying upon individual property owners, knowing that this exists, coming forward to say, hey, I want to do this activity, I need a permit.
Sort of like a Shade Tree permit.
Yeah, and exactly, that's, that's why we feel we won't be inundated by fence permits. It's, I mean, we only get so many a year. And even if we double it, it's not a huge increase. Which is why, you know, we are sending the zoning officer out because, you know, I say it, but it's probably a little more than Shade Tree permits, but probably not a lot. Because, you know, fences are expensive and you just don't get a lot of people putting in fences all the time. They're usually a major expense.
I do tend to agree with Mark, my, you know, inter-engineer, when I hear any here, any fence, any wall.
Jennifer, is there language that you might suggest that it isn't a totality of every?
Limited.
Wall and fence.
Could be up to the zoning officer.
Are you asking me now to take a crack at this ordinance? I think I did that in the very beginning. It didn't go over well with staff. I, I mean, I can certainly look at it again and see if there's something that I can incorporate and bring it back the next time. I'm, I'm not sure that I attempted to address the definition of the fence previously, but certainly something I can think about.
I think that there should be an out, an exception. And I think that exception can be done by a fairly competent zoning officer, which we have. So that if someone came in and said, I'm just putting some chicken wire up around my fence or my garden.
And so what I'm thinking about is we have a like a permit, a no fee permit. Like an, a net for fences under three feet, you can submit this permit and then it determines whether it gives the zoning officer the opportunity to make the interpretation. That says you do need the full permit because there's easements in the area, there's water lines in the area. Or it's such a small fence that you don't need anything and it, just sign off on it.
And what does the language mean about a building permit versus a zoning permit?
So the, the fence is, what is it, six feet? So fences over six feet require a building permit or, or wall.
Or wall or, or anything surrounding a pool.
Right. So the building permit is required for structural and for.
That's already approved, that's already a requirement.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's a building code issue.
Something, it's already a requirement.
Yeah, certainly we can, we can look at Dave's suggestion of, you know, altering the permit to be a zero. I mean, this is something that we've discussed in other situations.
The other part.
Specifically for agriculture gardens.
I mean, I've seen some pretty substantial garden fences.
I could fence my whole backyard and say I'm going to do a garden, but.
I, I am thinking about putting one in myself.
I think somewhere there's a logical way to do it. And I think it's up to the discretion of the zoning officer to make that choice.
So what, what, one of the avenues was, the other rabbit holes we were going on in was using temporary. Because if it's a temporary fence you're putting in your garden for the summer, keeps the rabbits out.
Yeah, but mine stays up all year.
Just tell us that it's temporary, Mark.
Are we online anymore? Cause everything's black.
I, I do worry about zoning officers because there's a lot of zoning officers who don't make a decision. They need to say, well, if I don't make the decision, I can't be wrong. This way it should go to the zoning hearing board. I don't think we fall in that position with our current zoning officer.
No.
But I don't know what the next zoning officer is going to be. Because I've had this argument that it's certainly, this is up to your discretion. If you can make this decision, I don't have to go through zoning.
And that, that's where management can step in and direct the zoning officer to abide by the timelines and things like that.
Then on the flip side, they can put the zoning. Then on the flip side, I can put the zoning officer in a tough situation where someone wants to put in an enormous fence and say, oh, you should grant me, you know, the exception or whatever. It's. I think there could be some language to limit the fence.
Yeah, I think it's the "any" is the problem, like Mark is saying.
Yeah.
How do we get around that?
This is a wall.
Limited to 24 inches?
I don't know. We'll.
Yeah, we'll, we can kick it around.
We'll kick it around some more. I think there might be something in the, I don't know, we'll have to figure something out.
Yeah, if there's an ability, for lack of a better term, like a desk audit, you know, where a resident came in and said, hey, I see that this is the code, the zoning, this is what I'm planning to do. Here's a sketch of my property. And zoning officer can look and see that on your maps, though, there's no impacts, signed, free delivery.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was talking about with that initial review permit for decorative fences below.
Yeah, but if, if they see that the parcel does have.
Yes.
Existing easements or right-of-ways be in potential conflict with that or that fence would be in wall with it, then that requires that. I got a lot of fences on my property. And I'll probably have more.
I guess we can take it back and take another crack at it.
But mine are all pre-existing.
We're passionate about fences.
Yeah.
This has nothing compared to the sign discussion that Greg and I lived for years.
Years, yes. Which we still haven't. Jerry Harbison always wanted to tackle that. He won't.
Yeah, we will.
Make a motion to table it?
Removed.
Second.
Favor? No, no opposed. Agenda item six, Planning Commission Enroll Report Final.
Okay, this is, this is the second time you've seen it, except for Mark. Last time we were here, we requested some 2024 goals and aspirations. So we took what comments you had, plugged them in, and there they are. So if anything triggers your interest beyond that, let us know now. Because I believe Commonwealth requires this to go to the board by March 1st.
So a couple updates on it. The Planning Commission Member Education, we have money in the budget so we can fund some of the PEMPI courses. We will probably limit it to one course per year. And that might be good for you as well. Per person. Not first come, first served. So we have that. And the other one that I wanted to talk about was the comp plan implementation. We'll start putting that into an agenda item, similar to how we have the transportation as an agenda item. And we'll just start getting the board more up to speed on what's going on with the implementation.
Part of education. I asked the police chief about this a year ago and nothing ever came of it. I think it would be wise for this board to get some sort of training from the police department of what to do in an emergency situation or active shooter situation.
In this room, you mean?
Yeah, we'll, we'll arrange that.
And hit the panic button.
Isn't there a trap door in here that goes down?
It's back there.
We should get a pole like Ghostbusters.
There's a slide that goes down.
Okay, that's good enough. Let's take a slide.
We can arrange that.
Do you all have any comments on the report?
I just want to thank staff for preparing it. Very well done.
Do we make a motion to move it forward? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And agenda item number seven, transportation infrastructure update.
So I'm going to take that, take this opportunity to talk about the transportation plan that we're working on as part of the comprehensive plan implementation. So the comp plan implementation had several transportation-related components to it. Safety was one of them. Active transportation, so bicycle pedestrian circulation was another piece of it. We've begun the process to, we had our initial stakeholder meeting for the active and safety plans. So we're doing the public engagement part of that together for those two plans because we saw a lot of overlap with that. So that has kicked off. You will be seeing a survey being released in the, I guess tomorrow's Friday. So I don't know if it'll be tomorrow or probably next week. Keep an eye on the website. Well, there's probably going to be an email blast and Facebook and things like that. So the survey will be focusing on safety, including automotive safety, and then also active transportation, so bicycle pedestrian transit as well. So please fill out the survey. We, there's a map component where we're looking for destinations that you would like to be able to walk to or bike to. So we're going to start collecting that information and in preparation for a public meeting. And public meetings, just like all the rest of the landscapes plan that we were working on, planning commissions absolutely 100% invited to those. So if something piques your interest, please come to those meetings. Involvement is key. So, and we will do, certainly do a better job of getting those invitations to the planning commission.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone online? Oh, yours, Greg?
Next month, we've had one application. That would be the Nestle Purina wastewater treatment plant upgrade. That's it.
Will Ridge Farm be back? Potentially.
They're not here to ask for an extension of the deadline, so that's going to be the following month.
All right. Do you want to make a motion for?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.